This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. It's 12 noon on October 15th. We'll have a roll call introduction of attendees. I see we've got Joe's here, Mike's here, Amanda's here on conference, Malvika, Jerry, myself, Steve Ening, the ex-official, former official Marion Guinness is here for the City Council, Jeff Collins is here, Jennifer Williams, Casey Shipley, Tracy Moore, Hillary here? No, I just said it.
She might have missed the caller.
Is Valerie, is that Valerie? Valerie. And okay, so that's who's in attendance. We have a forum.
We've got a couple of other people as well.
I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? Obviously.
You've got Lysy Reiling, Assistant Library Director.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Jennifer Williams, Librarian.
I thought I read that off, but I checked your names off, but I didn't read it off. I apologize.
No problem.
Okay, so first order of business is the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve that?
I move it, Tom.
Is there a second? All second. Okay, the motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Let's see, Joe?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Malvika?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, that passes. Public with comment? I don't see anyone. Move on to reports and communications. Friends?
Hi, everyone. This is Hillary Tanner, just calling in from the phone today.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm having some technical difficulties on my end, so no problem. I don't have a ton of updates from last month, just still working on the same project. So updating our donor materials, the donation page on the website, just trying to get the friends in front of as many potential donors as possible so we can support the work of the library. Still working on the plan for a large fundraising event next fall. I think we'll be ready to share more details about that very soon, but we're really excited. I think that's it for today, but thank you all.
Thank you, Hillary. Moving on to committee reports. Finances? Joe?
We're moving along. Everything seems to be in order with the timeline. I didn't see anything that really jumped out. Sorry.
Okay, personnel. Amanda? Oh.
Hi, yeah, so this is just coming to mind right now. I know we did a recent evaluation of Jeff for like a six month. I'm wondering, we usually do them in November. Do we need to do that again this November?
Yes.
Yes, so I need to be getting that out to you guys. I will get the survey out to you guys and I will contact Jennifer then about doing the staff surveys so that we can get all that going. I'm sorry that it's delayed this month, but I'll try to get that out to you as soon as possible.
What do you have going on, man?
Not much. Just slipped my mind somehow.
Thank you, Amanda. I'm sorry, Joe. Joe, I kind of cut you off.
Yeah, I do need to, as soon as things get settled down with the city, see about meeting with the administrator of the life point of finances. But I think we're still waiting on the dust to settle there before we do that, but it is on the radar, so.
Okay.
Are you going to try to facilitate that as far as a time period?
Yeah, after November.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Once the city's audit is completed.
Okay.
And he starts the 28th. That's his third day. The new city manager.
Of this month?
This month, yes. Michael?
I just had one question. How will we approve the minutes of the last meeting? I did have a question we brought up last time. Joe, you mentioned this, the $4,500 purchase for materials. And then Jeff was going to check on that. I'm just curious if I was at the result.
You didn't get an email?
I didn't get any email.
Oh, okay.
Well, it should have gone out to everybody. I thought it was. I'll check on it.
I deleted it.
Okay, so, okay.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Advocacy. Malvika?
I just wanted to share with you all. I was at Putnam as some part of the board in that strategic planning meetings. We're talking about memberships and people coming in and things like that. So I reiterated the point of introducing what we have. UC Aid is the event program that we do here at Davenport Public, how that could help them in getting people in. I also kind of gently reminded them that we had Putnam membership passes that the community can check out before they can have. And the amount of outreach that our library does, you know, so they could think about approaching us and things like that. That was one I again very gently suggested to Center for Nonprofit Excellence to, you know, remind themselves to maybe have an off-site meeting because almost all the nonprofits among their advisory community, almost all the nonprofits there that we service, we have some kind of connection with them or the other. So it would be wonderful for them to see how beautiful we are inside out and they can experience themselves too. That was my second. There's a book coming out and I think I had these to kind of just pass as I speak. Hello, Bob. Hello, Rob. There's a book coming out and this gentleman is the director of Urban Libraries Council. His name is Shemai Shay Michael Holman and meet me at the library, something which is, it's just published, it's just recently published. And he has, it's a nonprofit and, you know, I got to know him through LinkedIn. I have bought his book. I wanted to read it further. And he has been kind enough to say, hey, I would love, you know, if, I would love to talk to the Board of Trustees and, or your library's Board of Trustees if you would like. And I said, I'll share this with you all since that's a brand new book that he's published. Lastly, I attended a webinar, Libraries and Nonprofits, and I must share this. Maybe I'm in the library, where in the library, I tend to come across these webinars much more and that's how I attended. But it was a web junction webinar and libraries and nonprofits leveraging data into giving outreach services was the webinar. Pretty interesting. I'd be happy to send out information via email if anyone of you would like. And lastly, sorry, Tom, this is my real last, but this is what I saw online. You know, now, now is the time when everybody has these little things outside, you know, work for, et cetera, et cetera, for their candidates. This was something which Libraries Transform, which is an DLA institution, you know, had where, you know, I said, I'd be happy, Jeff, to put that in my yard. That's it. I just thought to get it to show it to you all. That's it. And Tom, that is all. Sorry.
Thank you, Malvika.
As I brought to the friends board once that I saw in Sun Prairie, Wisconsin, have these really nice signs that says, "A friend of Sun Prairie Libraries lives here."
Oh, lovely.
Which was, they were great signs and I gave you a copy of that one. I never got anywhere with it, but you're quite sure how to, you'd almost have to have a system where you put the signs out and pick them back up.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it'd be a great, also sort of in the same vein now.
Right, right. I said maybe a sticker or something, you know.
For actual yards.
Yeah. Oh, and I'm sorry, Tom, we're jumping in. Sorry, sorry about that.
Stuck out the floor.
Sorry, sorry about that. Lastly, thank you, Jeff, and all of you who have the store that, and friends, the store online, you know, so just made some purchase there. It's real nice stuff. So just wanted to let you know, like I just know, I found the link to our website. That's what I meant. So thank you. I'm really done.
Thank you, Malvika. I want to reflect that Bob Davis is here in attendance.
Hello, everyone. Sorry about that. Studio a little lost around here.
And we are at, in Reports of Communications Director's Report. Jeff?
Thanks, Tom. A couple of things included in your packet is a report. We are making progress on the main library renovation phase two project and the enhanced space project. Both of those are impacting a lot of operations right now. You'll notice a lot of shelving, furniture moving, a lot of things that look a little bit different on the main floor of the main library right now as we get prepared for those projects. One thing we did have a pre-construction meeting with Swanson Construction and we discussed kind of the timeline on what to expect and we're finalizing that timeline with them. We have another meeting on Thursday. We are hoping to minimize disruption to patrons. However, we have not determined yet what that is going to look like at this point. Once we have information, we're going to share it with the board. There is a possibility that we might have to close the front. We might have to close the library or we might have to close access to the front. Once we have more information about that, we'll make sure that we share that with you. So in particular, as a reminder for what this project entails is removing a lot of the concrete at the front porch at the main entrance to the library. And to do that safely, they're going to have to close off a good portion of that in order to do the work for the removal of the concrete and then also for casting new concrete and relocating the handicap stairs and that for the main entrance. We're hoping to be able to redirect patrons to staff entrance off the Fourth Street door if we can make that happen. So that way we minimize disruption in terms of access and keep the library open. However, we're not sure yet if that is going to be feasible. Our main concern is having security on site at that door anytime the library is open. So we want to make sure that we can have that happen. So once we have a little bit more, we'll share that with you. They did indicate anywhere from, we were hoping for a couple of days and they mentioned potentially several weeks. So we are hopeful that that will not come to fruition.
What's the timing?
We're still working on that. Yeah.
You think this winter?
We believe so, yeah. We believe they should be substantially done with the project by December 27th. So hopefully that'll happen very soon. In fact, they were on site today working on another part of the city. We did start a kids advisory board in June of this year. It's real similar to our teen advisory board, but for children that are maybe a little bit too young for TAB. So it is open for children ages seven to 10 and there's currently 13 members. It's a little bit more structured than our teen advisory board, but they're doing a lot of really fun things, activities. They've already come up with a couple of great programs that they've suggested, including a Lego club, a bouncy ball party, and a cozy hot chocolate party, which are really, really fun programs. You can see a couple of photos in the report that are illustrative of the great work that you're doing on that.
So is this open to anybody? Have you been a little confused yet?
Correct. Yep. We did add a new senior outreach stop to the Met of New Senior Living. Studio 34, Maker Space contract to expand services. Now I was going to share more information about that, I'm sure, in a little bit. In terms of community relations, Rachel Rutter, Information Services Librarian, was able to attend the ILA Annual Conference in Des Moines last week and she was able to give a presentation on the library business assistance program. So she did a great job with that. We're really excited to have her representing the library at the statewide level for that. We provided a letter of support to World Relief QC for their RDA grant and that is to build in some digital literacy initiatives. So if that grant is funded, that organization will be bringing groups of immigrants and refugees to our libraries for tours, library cards, and production of art services. So we're excited for that partnership, that they do get that grant and that comes to fruition. Also, back in February, our special collections team worked with a couple of artists on accessing some film footage from Davenport from the 1940s. And they actually did their film and they included some of that. I shared this briefly on the email a little while ago. But it did premiere, that film premiered at the Venice International Film Festival and it was the closing film and it received standing ovation. So we're pretty excited about that. Included a couple of links to some articles about that.
They don't really like this area, don't they?
They do.
They've been coming here for years.
Yeah. Hey, great work for our special collections team to be able to assist them with that. And then in terms of upcoming events, our pumpkin party is going to be real fun, probably on October 19th at Fairmount. That will have a pumpkin launch. It's a spice cider. The Quad Cities Archives Fair is going to be hosted at Credit Island Lodge this year, October 26th. We renamed our Warm Up Wednesdays to Coffee and Connections. That's going to be starting up again in November. So that'll be really great for a lot of our community members to be able to come in and warm up with a cup of coffee or some hot cocoa. We also have on November 12th, the T-Rex Tea Time as part of Dino Member and when Dinos take over the library. So a lot of really fun programming and educational program that we saw on. And one other notice, we're still finalizing the summer reading challenge trophy presentation with the winning schools. And that'll occur, we believe, next Wednesday at the City Council meeting, 5:30, so the October 23rd. However, we are still finalizing the details on that and the date. Once that's finalized, hopefully share that information with the board. But next Wednesday at 5:30, if you're available, it'd be great to have some representation from the Board of Trustees on hand to give out those trophies. And with that, if you have to answer any questions or comments or concerns.
Quick comment to whoever's responsible for the Quad City Archives Fair, Credit Island Lodge. I was at a meeting last evening with someone that there was a cornball running club had a race out there and thought that they had the lodge reserved and then came back and discovered that there was also a wedding reserved there. So double check the reservations.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Council Liaison, Marion?
I've done a lot today. We are working through lots of administrative stuff, the fire code, updates to the fire code and a, to our inspection code, which includes a rent rebate. It is something that's been talked about for a while. This is in cases where landlords have not done the first 30 days, not done the second 30 days. And at that point, the city can, well, not necessarily, it may start looking at giving tenants a rebate on their rent. And that will continue until it's fixed. And if it starts in the middle of the month, they will get prorated. So, you know, they'll have to pay half that month's rent. And this is, there are a couple, Dubuque has this, Iowa City has this, aren't any other cities in Iowa, and none other in the Quad Cities that have been working on this. So perhaps this will spread. I think it will pass council. It doesn't seem like a heavy lift to council. Yes.
So does the city pay the rent or does the city prevent the landlord from collecting?
Correct. Right. There's no money. That was, the question was, how do you deal with the money? Because the city is not in the business of, but this is legal and it has been tested in court. It's legal to do. So basically, if, and this is rarely used. Iowa City, they used it maybe 12 times since they've had it. So it isn't something that's very often high tenants, some, the biggest concern is that tenants won't think this is for anything and they can stop paying rent. They can't do that. You know, this is a very specific program for very specific chronic issues. And so, and so it is a limited thing, but it is still, the idea is when we, a few years ago, we only had the 30-day notice and when the Crestwood, which had really fallen into bad situation during the pandemic and, and I don't mean to bash it, but that, it was out of town owners and not being managed. There were people living there that had never had a lease. I mean, it was just not managed at all. But, you know, we get held off because you didn't, we didn't do that in the pandemic. In any case, in that issue, we had the only the 30-day notice to the tenants. That isn't time really for them to do much. And so the council extended notice to 60 days at that point. So now at 60 days, the thing gets posted. There's a 30-day, but there's a 60-day that says, we will, if this isn't fixed, this will be closed in 60 days. You know, so we could give two months' notice to people. But, but under the old rules, they still were having to pay rent. At that point, when we give 60-day notice, if it's, and again, each one's going to be different. It's, we will be, they, we will be able to say, you do not have to pay rent anymore. And they can start collecting their money, saving their money for the next month's rent or the down payment for a new place. So they, so when they, if it's closed at the end of 60 days, they will have been able to accumulate some money if they have to move. So that's the idea of the rent rebate is really to allow people that, you know, don't have means. This doesn't usually happen in, you know, situations where people have expendable income, you know. So, but even if they do, they'll be able to, you know, save that money toward a new place. If it is fixed, landlord does not get the rent back for the time that it was rebated. So they still get to keep the money for the inconvenience. So, you know, landlord doesn't get it back until, and then payments don't start again until problems are fixed. Does that make sense? See the logic of it now? It's really to allow people to collect, you know, to start to save money.
How do you prevent like retaliation and making sure that like there can't be an eviction during that period?
There cannot be. So right now, there is a code says there cannot, you cannot evict somebody right now under city code when you're, when they're under an order to repair. So they can't do that. The landlord is not allowed to do that. The, the, the question of retaliation, which is illegal by federal law, really goes then to what might come after. And that is never an easy thing and not something the city's going to be able to wade into. But what I'm hoping is that the people who are working with tenants in this situation, that legal aid will be able to be diligent about this. And there will be a track record. So it will be very clear, it will be very clear to perhaps claim retaliation. Because there'll be a track record. I mean, there will be written notice of this to landlords. So the landlord is trying to do that to people and legal aid has something to take to court to say, hey, you know, this is what happened in this situation. So we don't, the city does not have that, you know, that legal means. But that's something that's been discussed. And I'm concerned about as well because I know, I feel sure it's happened. It's not eviction, but it's raising the rent. And I asked the question, can we say you can't, after this happens, you can't raise the rent for six months or something? I was told no, we probably couldn't do that. We can't legally probably do that. But that was kind of my thought. Could we? Because this is a dire situation. This is, this will not impact many people. It will not impact many people. And hopefully, what we're trying to do is build compliance so that landlords, we don't want to go through this at all. But the point is to get landlords to understand we're serious. It's going to cost you money, something that didn't cost you money. It's going to cost you money. So when we say fix it, fix it. That's really the goal.
So, sorry. So if I understand you correctly, if a landlord is given 60-day notice, the renters are not going to have to pay their rent during that period?
That, yeah, that's the point at which, so it's a continuum and it isn't every single thing. So right now, when we say, Mr. Landlord, you have a problem and you need to fix this. And this is serious. This is not lack of screens. This is a serious problem. Life safety, where we have, people have to leave, is a completely different issue. But you have to fix this. We give them 30 days. We come back, you haven't fixed it. We say, we're going to give you another 30 days. And then, and then it's not fixed. And at the end of that, that's when potentially the rent rebate could start. Now, we understand sometimes there's going to be, if there's a contractor shortage or someone's really working to get a roof fix, and I'm not talking one where the rain's pouring through, things like that. We're going to probably be, try to be flexible with the landlord. But, you know, at that 60-day is when potentially the rent rebate could begin. It's not automatic and it's only for severe things. So.
So there's no heat in the building and water?
Right.
But upon completion of the repairs?
Yes.
The landlord can then raise the rent?
We, yeah, we can't control that. We can't legally control that. He can't, but he or she cannot evict people. Cannot evict people during that period. So, and the, and the, and the tenant does not have to give that money back to the landlord. That, they didn't have to pay. If they're in the building or whatever, they don't, they don't have to give that money back. So it's not perfect, but it is not, it's not perfect, but it is. There are certain things we cannot do as a city. And part of that, and that was my question about this the whole time, is the legality of us stepping in and holding money and giving money. And that's not the way it works. So, because that gets real sticky.
What would you do with a habitual landlord that?
I know what I'd like to do. I'm Southern and I'm a bio people. Anyway, I'm sorry. Well, we would, you can't, you cannot, this is frustrating for me. You can't apply lanes on one building to anything against another building. You can't punish a landlord if they've got a problem at this building. You can't put that same restriction on another building. I wish we could. So.
You just, yeah.
Yeah, it is. And hopefully, if it's starting to cost them money, this will cost those people money. And there, it's like 95% or more of our landlords are fine. It's that handful. It's that handful. So if they're doing it here, they're probably doing it here and we're probably having to take the same action there. So it's, yeah, it's the most, and a lot, some landlords are like, oh, you know, this is going to be hard to be a landlord. But like Rich Oswald said, if you have never seen my face, then you probably don't have a problem. So, you know, it really isn't to just be punitive and it is to get compliance and build compliance and make people understand we are serious about this. And it won't cost you money. And maybe they'll say, gee, I don't want to be a landlord anymore. Sell it to somebody else. So, yeah. Sorry if it takes too long. And our new, and our new city manager starts October 28th.
And I want to thank you. Part of Central Park and part of Third Street have new stripes and you can actually see the lanes. Keep going.
Well, and that actually, we re-strive every year. We start in one part doing, if it is city, you know, the state does their thing. The state does their thing. So you might be thinking the state. But the, you know, we do re-striving the north and south sections every year. We actually do that every year, but not, we don't do the state's. I don't know if you're on table, but I'm glad that you're happy. Remember, we had the whole thing about how we get old, we can't see, we can't see, we can't see the lines when it's raining because our odds can't, because of the sparkle stuff in it.
Thank you, Marion.
You're welcome.
Moving on to old business, discussion of administrative policy, section five. Jeff?
So again, this is a continuation of the last couple of meetings we've had where we're discussing and reviewing administrative policy. We're on to section five, which is hierarchy, and then this is section six, which is miscellaneous. So section 5.1 is primarily really just pro forma changes. Nothing significant added to here. There is an additional sentence added under selection, item number four.
Any just, any questions or discussion?
Next one. 5.2 covers nepotism and 2A strikes out a direct or indirect supervisor supporting relationship between, because that would basically be everybody, it depends either direct or indirect. So that just makes it a little bit clearer and a simple change there.
5.3?
5.3 is promotion and transfer. The sentence that struck through under general policy was, administration was unclear what the meaning was for that. And since we weren't sure and we're the ones that are administering the policy and formal procedure, we felt it best to determine that sentence. Under provisions, item number four, the language change there just matches the bargaining contract language. Strike through on that one as well. the bargaining contract language, and strike through on that one as well. And then item number six, on page two, adds, employees are not eligible for promotion or transfer until their six-month probationary period has been successfully completed. And that's just standard operating procedure.
Any questions or suggestions? 5.4?
5.4 covers layoff and recall. And again, that's a pro forma.
I have a question on this. Under recall, point three, recalled employees shall respond to the notice within five working days following receipt of the notice of attempted delivery. How do we know that delivery has occurred?
We would send it by certified mail.
Then they sign for that. Yeah, okay. So all right. Signature delivery, sounds reasonable. That's good.
Actually, certified and registered mail are two different things. I think the registered one has the return receipt. And I think it's, I think that's correct. I think this is correct. You said certified, but it actually is different, I think. I don't know where I learned that, but.
I think they both, specifically from both.
I think there's actually a difference.
I think they both, I thought both of them had the option to.
Maybe, maybe.
I have no case in here.
And Jeff, as we move through these, I presume these are all in accordance with the union contract? I mean, they're not, we're not creating any central conflicts?
Correct.
All right. Is that all for section five?
Yes.
Section six?
So section six is kind of a miscellaneous or other category. This is where everything else doesn't quite fit into one of the other sections ended up. So 6.1 addresses the status location. A couple of just minor pro forma changes. We're removing the provision under one saying that the automatic payroll deduction has to go to a local Davenport bank. Unnecessary specified by this, just in Davenport. And then under two, felt like that language is redundant.
Any questions or discussion? 6.2?
6.2 is remote work, and this came out out of COVID. Change primarily is work from home to remote work. So just some more pro forma changes on this.
Any questions or comments?
Do you have excellent amount of people that work remotely? Is there a good percentage that work from home or?
No. Yeah, due to the nature of the business of keeping free billings open and having staff on site with very limited opportunities for remote work and organization.
Any other? Section 6.3?
Uh, this covers being working in a closed building. So under two, the changes were to clarify based on standard operating procedure. Four was redundant, included, because it was covered under five. And then we removed the specific department names. And on eight also was unnecessary, felt, because it happened very infrequently.
Any questions, comments? 6.4?
6.4 covers emergency closures. And again, it's just a little bit of rephrasing. Number two struck out because it was rephrased under number one. And then number five was unnecessary.
Any questions, comments? Okay, so these all move on, and we will, we will approve all these in not, in November?
Correct, yeah. But your next meeting will provide lead up versions of all of them and an opportunity for you to approve the administrative policies at that point.
Thank you. We're really moving here. New business, approval of unattended children policy. Jeff?
Thanks, Tom. So the first thing you notice is a slightly different format. This will, is a board policy which impacts the public. And it is now using a template that matches our approved new guidelines. So something that our new marketing coordinator, Tessa Wallace, created. So that's the first thing, is it just looks a little bit different, a little bit more polished and professional, has our logo on there. It also has a section to state the purpose or the intent of the policy, and then listing out the provisions. So under, number one is totally new to provide that summary, rather than before, the previous version just went straight into it. This one tells us a little bit of why the policy exists. And then item number 200, provisions, clarifies that the library does not provide childcare and is not responsible for. I recommend we change unattended there to the supervision of children. That was a mistake on my part. That actually came from number seven, where we have that phrase, the supervision of children. So that should be in that spot right there, replacing the word unattended with the supervision of. And then number three, we define what an unattended child is, and merge up the ages a little bit. So four is redundant, and five is worthy, and now we're able to get all that into three. And then same with six is just a little bit of simplification.
Since you've been under eight, in the past, were able to be in the library unattended?
No, the items in black are what currently is.
Any discussion, questions?
Jeff, I don't know if I'm catching this, under the statement of purpose, I'm catching this, where it says, the library common use resources and services.
Use resources and services.
So Davenport Public Library welcomes and encourages children to visit the library, use resources and services, and attend programs. Whether it says use resources, common use services?
I think so. Been too much into it.
I'm just a little comment. You refer to the responsible caregiver in number three, and yet number six doesn't really come back to identifying that individual as an option. It's got responsible caregiver comes with the child and yet leaves or whatever. Is that's, I mean, is that, we just, first try to find that responsible caregiver. By chance, might be just somewhere else in the building?
Yeah, that's what we would do. We could add that line.
In here, I mean, it's detailed. But just for consistency, it's.
It does say if the parent slash guardian cannot be located.
Yeah. That's different than responsible caregiver relative to item three.
Yeah, that's a catch-all to imply that it would be the parent guardian or responsible caregiver. Yeah. We could add that line to it.
And explain again why you removed number seven?
Because it's covered up in number two.
Any other questions? I know, Jeff, we had talked about, you and I had talked about whether, typically, we would discuss policy change at one meeting and then approve it at the following. Was you intending for us to approve this today?
Yeah, that's a, just as a brief segue, right now, our accreditation is going to be due at the end of February. And we have about five policies to get through and review before that period. So what we'd like to do is approve this one at this meeting, because there's no substantive changes to it. It looks like there's a lot of red markouts, but it's really not that much to it. So that we can keep moving forward that process, so that we can have all those policies reviewed and, and/or approved prior to the accreditation terms. Because we have to look at, one of the requirements for the board is to look at our policy within the three-year period. So we have, I believe, four more after this that we need to get through. So it's about right.
Okay. I mean, we, we can, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement, we can do this. But I think we, it'd be best if we, once we do this, that we get a clean copy of the approved policy. At least we see it next month at, you know, in our packet of stuff. That's okay.
Yeah, we can get a clean one whenever, whenever you'd like. Usually, after the board would approve a policy, we'll update it and put it out on the website.
Okay.
If you approve it today, that's what we're doing, and send it on to the board. If you prefer to wait and then approve it next month, we could do that as well. And we can wait.
I, I'm, I'm fine with approving it today. I, I, like I say, I just think the more, I myself would like to see the clean copy of it, you know, when, when, what, when it was we approved. So.
I move we adopt the unattended children's policy as amended.
Is there a second?
A second, did you?
There's a motion, a second? Amanda?
Yes.
It is not, actually.
Can you hear me? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Jerry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Valvita?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And my own brothers, yes. Okay, so that, that's approved. Thank you, everyone. And the next item on the agenda is update on the next iteration of the strategic plan.
Hey, Tom, so there is a memo in your packet that brought a little bit of information about the strategic planning process for us. In background, in January of this year, the board did vote to extend the current strategic plan to end on June 30th. So it's actually extending it six months beyond when it was originally going to expire. And that primarily was to align our future strategic planning cycles for fiscal year rather than calendar year, which is what we do with most of our other documents. It also provides an opportunity for our newest trustees to get a little bit more information about the board and about the library before making some decisions that might influence that kind of strategic direction of the organization moving forward. In August, I approached our great Friends organization, and they did agree to provide funding for us to hire a consultant to help us with this process. And so we solicited some proposals. So we got more than the three written estimates that we needed. It was under the $10,000, so we follow the city purchasing guidelines. And we are in the process of awarding the contract to a service based in Des Moines called Atomic Global. So the next iteration of the plan is going to kick off in December and conclude in April or May of next year, and will include some key components. We'll have a peer library analysis. We'll receive a community survey. There will be three focus group sessions. There will be two half-day strategic planning workshops. It'll obviously culminate in the strategic plan. And we also have access to software that the company provides for three months complimentary. So the, the big thing for the board today is to discuss that strategic planning team makeup and who would like to participate on that committee as well. So library administration is proposing that we include three or four trustees. We include library administration, a supervisor representing leadership team, a library employee to represent staff, a representative from the Friends, and then a city council liaison, hopefully, and possibly an employee from the city. And to keep it relatively small and nimble and an opportunity for us to have very candid conversations without following the, having to follow the open meetings portion of that law, the open meetings law. The cost is no more than $15,000 for this. And again, the Friends are going to fund it, so it's not coming out of the library's operating budget. And included in the packet was a proposal from the companies. You can see that and what it looks like, although now the dates in it are a little bit different, because we are proposing to show them a little bit later. So this memo is just for informational purposes, and it would be great to know within the next week or so, who from the trustees would like to participate in that strategic planning team. And the commitment, the time commitment on that in particular, because they're coming from Des Moines and we're paying them for this, the plan is for them to drive out one day in the morning, do one session that afternoon, then do another session the next morning before they return back. And they'll also have a separate earlier trip where they come out and do focus groups. So the commitment from trustees at that point would be to be able to attend those two meetings. And I'm not sure the dates, but it would probably be in the middle of the week, maybe a Tuesday, Wednesday, or a Wednesday, Thursday type thing. So it'd be one afternoon and one morning for at least four hours each time. And we're purposely structuring this so that we can try to get as much input from as many people as we can of our library stakeholders through the community survey, through those focus groups, through the strategic planning team that is composed of a good number of stakeholders. So it sound like a plan?
So would, would the team listen in on any of the focus groups or any, whoever is on?
They would not.
They would not?
Yeah, we would get information from the focus groups, but they would not, the teams wouldn't be attending those focus groups.
Jeff, when's, when's the last time something like this was done for the libraries?
Leading up to 2021? Yeah, the current plan we have went in effect in 2022, 2023, and 2024.
Yeah, since I've done this, will be the third one, strategic plan. And I just have one quick question, just for informational purposes. We, we have a community survey, and then we have a focus group. And they do have an explanation of that here, no doubt about that. But the communities, focus group would be actually people coming together and just talking, right, talking, I mean, meeting in physical. And community survey is something that they have said about, you know, we as people here or we kind of share it as a printed survey that goes out, right? That's what, that's going to be, right, the community survey?
Correct, yeah.
A printed format goes out?
Well, we distribute it in a variety of formats.
Yes, printed and online, excuse me.
Yeah, in person in all of our facilities as well as on our website. And we share widely through social media.
That would be.
That would be the community survey. And the focus group would be kind of three groups. One would be library, one would be community, and then the third would be partners in the community.
And I think, you know, what you said about the community, the focus group, I, that was, that was something I remember we had done that the first time as well, that, you know, we were all out, and we had teenagers too participating in it, in that focus group. So thank you.
And for the four companies that we reached out to, two of them were local. And all four that we received were competitive. And one of them was the one we used previously, and they had a really good packet as well. Overall, we felt like this might be a good direction for this particular plan.
I love their photo, too.
It's a beautiful building.
It is, it is.
I, I think what, what we as trustees have to think about is who from the trustees are going to be on this committee. And I know when I met with Jeff, he had, he had suggested that the executive board. And I'm, I'm fine with that, except that I, if someone else is wanting to do it, I'm more than happy to step aside, because I personally, this is just being, I personally don't find strategic planning that helpful. But that's just me. I know we have to do it, and I realize it's an important function. But if someone else wants to do it, have at it.
And also, my, just in sending Ben as an observer to have. And also, my, just in sending Ben as an observer to have new, some new people on the board participating might, because they, some of you guys have been here for a while. And, and, and it might be fresh perspective and a good learning and, you know, all that thing that happens.
So to that end, I think like Honey, for example, would be a real good member of that team because this is something she's done professionally in her career as well. So I think she'd bring some valuable insight. Speaking for her, since she's not here.
That was a teacher. So when, when would we, would you like?
By the end of this month would be the best, if we can find that, that information out by then.
This is the private timeline and here pretty much close to.
Close, just delayed by a month.
Okay. I'll be honest, I'd love to serve on this, but I know I'm going to be gone most of the month of February. It's just kind of problematic.
Okay.
Otherwise, I don't know if there's a hard time off the streets to support it.
Well, you know, I, I guess from my perspective, it would be whoever would want to serve to throw it open to the board.
And I think Jerry, that'd be okay because we're delayed by a month. So most of that in February is actually happening in March.
So you think it will actually be in March or you think it, the timeline?
Yeah, the, well, the phase two where we have those strategic planning workshops were scheduled in February according to their proposal, but we're not ready to do that at that time. It'll be in March.
Okay. So again, anyone interested in serving?
I would be happy to. If, if, I do not want to jump in, but if there's anybody who would want to, I would mind sticking aside as well.
Well, like, we need like what, three or four or something?
Three or four.
Whoever else would like to serve?
I cannot.
Okay, all right.
Work wise, it'd kill.
Okay.
You can add your name, particularly if these workshops are pushed out into better even like better yet.
Well, and, and you're relatively new to the boards, that would be good too, because I, I've been around for a long time. So, you know, maybe having a new, a new set of eyes look at things. Is there anyone else?
I could reach out to Honey as well and see if she can.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Do we have first alternate? Oh, good, good. Pitch warmer? Okay, great.
With Honey, it has to be like, it's mandatory, honey. That's it. Right, whatever.
This is, this is recorded, so she.
Well, you know, you know, and both, and both, both Bob and Honey would be, again, would be good because they're relatively new to it. So that's good. I've been around for a long time. So again, I guess because I look kind of jaded at that. Anyway, okay. So I think we've got a plan there and we've got people. So that's good. So I don't think we have to vote on that. That is just whoever wants volunteer. So moving on to the next item on the agenda?
I'm all here, but I try to keep Tuesdays, the first and second, Tuesdays open for me. I'll knock anything else out, but that's.
Okay. Are we good with that, Jeff?
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
Okay. And I really don't have any comments in the president comments. So I guess we're on to the reference department.
Hi there. I'm Valerie Farrar. I'm the information services director. I have a right chair on the corner so you can see me. I have been with the library for a number of years and I'm looking for a current role I've had for about a year. But good news is information department is currently fully staffed. We have a couple of part-time positions in our department and those tend to have turnover because those tend to be recent graduates with their MLS and they either are opening in half this year or they go elsewhere. And we have a five-hour week substitute who has come back, has been retired, and she's come back to the library. She keeps coming back. So, so that just breaks. So there's two big things with the reference department that we do on a daily basis. We staff the reference desks and we purchase material for the libraries. So I say, and my Hannah, I said, we staff most of the hours in the library. I mean, that is almost every hour of the day we're there, except like meetings. We just had a meeting across the hall and the customer service department covered for us during meetings and we cover for the customer service department when they have meetings. And, and very rarely on, we have to have like a lunch hour, we have to put assignments, the library, that's closed for the hour in case we're short staffed. But most of the times, we're there day after day, answering the phones, answering people some questions in person, answering emails. So that's one of the two things that we do. But we also, we also assist people with their scanner, printer, copier questions and that's mostly at the downtown library, but sometime at the branches as well. And some days, it just seems like all you're doing is teaching people how to use the photo copier or you teach people how to use the printer. So that's a bunch of our time. But we do offer one half hour dedicated sessions for, we call it book librarian sessions. And so in 2004, we had 88 times that people requested those sessions. So far this year, we've had 22 requests for those sessions. But we, we have people who, it tends to be a lot of, I wanted to create a resume. And they, we have people sit down with them and we, we don't tend to use Word, we tend to use the software we have called, this, rather than software we have. But that allows, if they don't have to keep track of their passwords, if they forgot their passwords, if they've forgotten how to log into that system, our administration can go up, not the admins for that software, go and retrieve their passwords and the documents for them. So that is a big part of our book librarian. We also spend a lot of time doing, buying materials for the collection. And we do that via software called, you know, we have iPage, we have Baker &amp; Taylor, we have Midwest Tape, and you know, if need be, we'll purchase from Amazon. But the selectors research and try to keep those collections balanced and fresh. Heavily used books are replaced, we get out of the collection. And for, we in the collection, we have two chief resources. We have simply reports, which used to get used all the time. We still can use simply reports. And there's also Collection HQ. And Collection HQ is a little more sophisticated in that it will tell you for, in like the 600s, the head area, it will tell you if you're over stacked or under stacked of that based on your circulation. Or it can move things from the Paramount Library to the main library, if, if, if that's a suggestion. But it's overseen by the librarians, they go, those are suggestions from Collection HQ. The librarians make the final decision about what is being replaced or moved. And the also, one thing about reading is you go through the collection, you see areas you need more in. So that's a helpful thing also. We have A B materials, but some of those are not getting used as much, but we're having an increase in our use of digital resources like ebooks and audiobooks. So for example, just the ebooks and audiobooks, we had like 83,000 circulations last year and if you include the magazines, we had over 100,000 circulations from Overdrive. Questions about those two main things we do?
Valerie, you, you do have, we read order collection, you know, we read out our order collection and things like that. Have we allowed, I mean, have we allowed to kind of, like, let's say, if they're in a kind of a gullish condition, are we allowed to kind of give them to prisons, these reading books? And the reason I ask is because I saw a program here locally in Sempera, and obviously then I have something which they go out to prisons and do. So I just thought of Jackie.
Our items technically are the Friends. And the Friends can do with them as they wish. So they purchase, they go to our bookstores, some of them go to a place called Better World Books, and some of those will go to prisons.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
And for the quick clarification on that too, there is a, an aisle of code that governs the use of public property like that that's deaccessioned or disposed of as a government organization. So we have, we cannot just give away anything, we have to sell it. And so the Friends are technically buying our discarded items.
It could go that way, if need be. Okay, got it. Yep, thank you, thank you. On to the maker space.
Well, and in regards to the collection, I know Jeff and I had talked of the number of items that are published every year. It's, it's, it's a huge number. And so to be able to winnow it down to the number of items that you purchase for a public library, I mean, it's, it's obviously a giant sorting process. And so I want to applaud you for the various steps, various levels that you do, do that particular process.
And we have about 17 librarians who stock materials. So we all have specific areas we, we have.
I do have to share something.
Yes.
You have one Indian cookery book and the author's father talked about that book on Facebook. So I sent him a link and a screenshot saying, we have two copies of that in Davenport, Iowa. So, thank you, Valerie.
On the makerspace, makerspace is training, training, training our staff. So we've spent, in 2024, we spent every meeting talking about one device. So for example, we had, we have, we have the training at the beginning of our meeting, so we don't, not have time for them. So we always had training on the 3D printer, on the large format printer, on the cricket, on the making buttons. And so into that space, I made this candy cane little button with our button maker and you can all have it. And I agree to hear you heard about that. We were, we helped the city of Davenport when they had that crisis last month. They came over at like, you know, five minutes after nine, they were, we're doing that. Yeah, that's a good thing. But uses training have worked. In 2024, we had 50 dedicated training sessions for the makerspace, but uses is on the uptick. So it's typical, probably three to four days a week that we're starting our 3D printer because people can send in jobs and then we print them out. So one day I took note of the fact that the 3D printer was on, someone was using the conversion station, and then we had a class a few minutes later. I think also a group of people was touring the library for the, for the construction project that's happening. And so our 3D printer, our makerspace is getting more and more and more use. So I expect to see, you know, more than 50 next year. We're going to probably have 75, 80, if not 100. And this fall, as Jeff mentioned, we'll be gaining, we've got one glass wall on the makerspace, we'll be adding a second glass wall and doors so that we can secure the makerspace, which will allow us to have some machines out for the public, have our cricket out for the public. So there were, there's not much of a set of time.
Do you, question, with the increase in usage, is there going to be a potential increase in need for staff to support that?
Well.
That's just a question, open ended.
Yeah, what, what our plan is, right now, people, they submit requests for, for the space and then we, if they have not had the training, we train them. If they have the training, like someone comes in every Monday night and uses a presentation, we can just like, well, let her have that. And she chooses what she's doing. But what plan is for us to have in November's open makerspace hours, just sessions, session times. And we also, at first, we had just a subset of librarians on the makerspace team, but a couple of months ago, we increased that to all the librarians are being on that team next, but not Quinn, which is a social worker.
Okay.
And so I also should mention for the book librarian, we just started a meeting half an hour ago, decided to increase that book librarian team so it includes, includes everybody who feels comfortable now, so everyone's going to be on that team. The social work program, you can schedule up to an hour-long program with Quinn. She's on pace this year to have approximately just below 3,000 contacts with patrons. But that's, and but she works with outside organizations, she works with Salvation Army, community healthcare, and goodwill. And so we've, she's setting up memoriam's understanding with those groups to, to have an agreement about what we're going to do and what the partner will do for us. And she also organized a back-to-school program, it was on August 10th of this year, and she had shoe vouchers, which was interesting. So she got a $50 shoe voucher from Shoe Encore, also known as Shoe Depot. And she said she, she was trying to plan for the fact that people would call her up and say, I'm not going to be at this event this day, so can I reserve a shoe voucher? And so she had all those plans and methods for making sure that just people who showed up that day. And intent was for people, kids, for back-to-school for kids. But they were also, they had all sorts of organizations partnering on that August 10th date.
Very quick question, but wasn't, is Quinn's funding those still, was it limited term funding?
It's for three years.
Three years.
I'll let Jeff speak to that.
Yeah, good question. Yeah, so we were fortunate to be able to receive some of the ARPA temporary funded, funding from the city council. And that was for two of our positions, early literacy coordinator and then the library sergeant worker. And those were both funded through the end of December of this year initially. And working with the city last fall, when we usually work with them as part of the city process for the budgeting process, it starts in September and then goes all the way until late March, I think. So I did, working through that process, we were able to get funding from the city for an additional six months of that position. So we kept them for one full extra year essentially as of last fiscal year. So through fiscal of '25, which ends on July 1st, or June 30th of this next summer. And we're in the process right now of working to extend that position as well in part of the FY 2026 budget. All ARPA funds have to be encumbered by December 31st, 2024, and they have to be expended by December 31st, 2026. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
But we also do a lot of incidental programming and more long-term programming. Excuse me. Here you go. Sorry. So we have a library assistance program, business assistance program. And so this is, this is a continuation of a program that was started two years ago. But this year, we put together this brochure, which gives people links to, in context, QR codes. And so as Jeff said, Rachel just presented at ILA last week, so that went well. We also have the seed library, which is now closed because it's cold outside. But we have the seed library, which will open again next March, I believe. And here's a little sample of some of our leftover seeds. Each of you can take home. Everyone's getting a dill, them, from the company of Barry Morris. But that, that's an example of what people can come to the library and a household can check out, check out five packets of seeds every month. So, and then you come back the next month and check out another five packets of seeds. As Jeff mentioned, we now have Coffee Connections, which used to be called Warm Up Wednesdays. Their thought is that when they're going out around the building, they're connecting with people who are not necessarily very, sometimes very interactive and giving those people that time to talk with staff so that they get to know them. We have six book clubs that the information department is responsible. We have more than six in the library. And I was told to particularly emphasize the Read with Pride book club. So I will do that to you. And we have National Voters Day registration room department with St. Ambrose to register people to vote. As you mentioned, we have the QC Made program, so I, I took time off working, attended one. And it was the Davenport John Deere Works. And we also have a very popular formalware program where we gather formalware in like January and then we give it away the next month. That's a very popular program. We have some issues with space, where to keep all those days, but we think that we've got that figured out this year, but that will happen in, come January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have one question, Valerie. The 3D files that you mentioned, that, you know, people do send it across and things like that. The 3D files that you mentioned, that, you know, people do send it across and things like that? Like, you know, is there, is there help? If somebody comes up to us in the library, and they do not have that 3D file, but they want brain printed, let's say, you know, something like that printed, do we help them in finding those files for them to print? I mean, how does it go for those, we want to print but don't have?
Yeah, so two things to thought about. One is that only staff touch 3D printer, we all have patrons touch.
Oh, okay, okay.
But as far as, we usually have the files, we haven't had any questions about that.
Oh.
So there are sources, you can go to and obtain those files. If you want to print out a cat with a hat on it, you know, someone out there's got that. But we would not have, but we would help them.
Oh, okay, to find, like, you know, sometimes they want something, but they don't have the file itself. Okay, so we can help them with that.
We can, yes.
Couldn't that be part of that Book Librarian session?
Yes, it could be.
Oh, yes, that's, yes, that's a good, that's a good one.
And go, Jerry?
One more. I'm sorry, but what's Cricket?
Cricket is a machine that will cut out precisely your shapes. So you can cut out vinyl, you can cut that out, and then you can weed out the holes, like in the letter A, you have to weed out that middle triangle. And then you can apply it to a T-shirt with our heat press. Or you can make stickers with this Cricket.
Thank you.
I guess just an observation, if the use of Makerspace continues to grow, again, my observation about the potential need for more staff. But it would seem that that might be a potential ask to the Friends to potentially help fund. Because this would be, seemed like a very, it would be a unique, but very useful service we could provide to the members of the community. So just an observation on my part. So thank you very much for your information. I think everybody appreciated it. Is there any other question?
I just wanted to commend Val for her decades of experience and her experience managing this department, where she's held many roles at the organization over the years, and always does a great job. And she's a great supervisor, and she manages this team of really dedicated librarians, and they're really passionate about their work, and they do a fantastic job. I think just trying to condense it all into a 20-minute presentation and one page is really challenging for how much they do in terms of reference services and readers advisory, in terms of interlibrary room processing, helping with the Makerspace, the Book Librarian, the business assistants, and so many different things across the board. They also help out a couple of podcasts and with managing our blog as well, Information Services blog online, and just they do a ton and a lot of work. And Val does a great job managing that team.
Thank you. Just the upcoming programs, events like this listed activity, does this all come out of the Reference Librarians? Roles and responsibilities?
Yeah, some of those use services.
Some of those use services.
So yeah, the summary that I provided in the director report, just a few highlights of programs that are, I think, that the board might be interested in, and that reflects everything throughout the library.
There's a question about Information Services, Use Services. Talk to somebody at the reference desk, and maybe the more responsible.
Is the desk with the sign on it that says information, is that the reference desk?
Yeah. Did they have, I have to share this, Valerie, I mean, to the events that we do here in the library. I remember two years ago or something like that, they asked me if I could do an Indian cooking thing. And I've been asked again for 2024, and I said yes to it, so.
I just wanted to bring up something. I attended the NAACP Freedom Banquet about a couple weeks ago. And Quinn's daughter was one of the keynote speakers, and she was absolutely phenomenal. I mean, I think she's 12 years old, I mean, and I think she stole the show. So I just wanted to pass that along to you guys, in case you didn't know that, but she was phenomenal. And I heard you mentioned kind of like a youth something. I'm hoping that maybe she serves in some capacity. But she's welcome to join. Okay, I'm not sure. Just phenomenal.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. I know Lexi was able to attend that event as well.
Yeah.
Maybe not related whatsoever, but just wanted to bring up, I actually went to the TEDx Davenport presentation the other night. Didn't know that even existed, but it's one of these been five years. It was outstanding.
I started in the first one.
Really? It was just great. I mean, I have no direct relationship with your library, but as far as sharing information and help, it's something well mentioned.
I wanted to share, I also was at the NAACP banquet, very, that's always a very fine event. And it was very good presentations of that. So I guess, is there any other business? I will entertain a motion for a German.
A motion.
Is there a second? Motion and a second for a German. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? We are a German.